I want to remind my colleagues to please silence all electronic devices at this time. I have several little things that I'm going to be passing around. The first one is a slight revision to the minutes. So I'll pass that around, please make sure you take one and pass it on. Next thing I'm going to pass out is just a, there were a couple of additions to the personnel report that you all have seen. So the ones that are new are highlighted, so pass those around as well. Later this evening, we will be discussing, this afternoon, meeting options. So I'm going to go ahead and pass those out now, too. Also on the agenda is committee openings. And I'll talk about that in a little while, but I'm going to go ahead and pass these around so you can see where some openings are. And the final pass out that I have are standing, our school board's standing rules. We refer to that, we want everybody to know what we're talking about. And just a couple of quick announcements before we begin. January 22nd is going to be our retreat. I'm not sure that we've actually decided an official start time that mo- I know we're going to start in the morning, but I'm not sure what time that morning. But I do know for a fact that we are going to stop at 2:30 because we have planned a joint meeting with city council at 3 o'clock in building 19. So we will stop at, we will be at TCC and we will stop at 2:30 so that will give us time to drive over to building 19 and get situated and ready for a 3 o'clock meeting with city council. And that meeting is going to be talking about the CIP plans, so.
January 27th?
22nd, the 22nd. That's a normal school board meeting day anyway, but it's just that hopefully you all have marked off the entire day for our retreat. Pardon? At this point, I know that we're planning to at least start by 10 o'clock, but we may start just a little sooner. And first thing on our agenda is leadership interests. And I just want to say that this is a time for those people who are interested in serving in a leadership capacity to let us know their interest. This is not a time for board members to tell us who they plan to nominate or who they share, or to share who they're supporting. This is strictly a time for people just to step up and say, "I'm interested in whatever leadership position they're interested in," so.
I'm interested, but I don't qualify. I'm interested.
Ms. Melnick, do you have anything to say about that right now? Go ahead, just you're interested in-
That's what you asked, yeah.
In what capacity? Vice chair, okay. Anyone else?
I'll just say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve as vice chair this year, and I'm not asking for that privilege again next year.
And I'm interested in vice chair.
Okay.
Joel, are you interested in chair?
I'm not.
Ms. Rice?
I'm just keeping open possible leadership positions, also looking into possible outside positions, so I'll keep you posted.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm interested in running for chair again. Is there anyone else?
I just want to ask, between now and January, when do we actually vote?
January 8th.
Okay, between now and then, there's still a good, could be some people stepping up and there could be changes. This is not set in stone here, it's just, okay, thank you.
This is just to kind of let people know who's interested. Anyone else? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have schedule of meetings to discuss, and I pass that around to you just to show you the possibilities of, it looks like this. Diane was good enough to already have this ready for us, just because she heard us talking about it, so she went ahead and showed where we could have possible meeting times. So this is just for you to look at. We won't be voting on that tonight, we'll be discussing it. It's just for information purposes. I don't, is there anyone that would like to speak to that? Ms. Rice?
I just want to say thank you because it was a request from the policy committee, so this will, this will prove to be useful, I think, for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. See on the committee-
What comment over here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Manning.
So, we voted earlier this year to change the bylaws to have meetings on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday.
Correct.
Just so that we could have de-conflict with city council. What's the reasoning for moving it back, or the request to move it back?
Well, the request from the committee was just to have the full board make that determination.
What we did is, we did earlier this year.
But we were asked to look at it again, and the policy review committee felt it should be a full board decision.
Yeah, and I'm just wondering why, I mean-
I think others need to speak to that.
Mr. Edwards?
The de-conflicting has not generated a whole, you know, those people that asked came to the podium and said, "Hey, you know, we need to be, really haven't materialized." There are some issues in terms of limiting our ability to gather in December, the conflicts with graduation, there are, there are some issues that are, have historically been one we did first and third. And I thought it was worth revisiting, so that's why it's on the table, we can figure out what we want to do in the next couple of weeks.
Ms. Rice?
And I'm on the, on the policy review committee, and I was in agreement with Dan and Carolyn, we all agreed that we need to look at it again. I've been attending both city council and school board meetings for years, so I saw that there was probably more problems with it and that maybe we needed to look at it again, so.
Would you be willing to share the problems? I mean, I want to understand.
Well, being, being, what Dan just said, you know, being able, yeah, the dates, the graduations, conflicting with when we meet with city council and having to come up here again where we could just come back over here where we have our joint meetings, that type of thing. And we haven't seen people generated to go speak to both. And I, you know, when I did speak to both, I didn't see it as a problem when I spoke as a citizen or, you know, as a leader of a group. Actually, it was more advantageous for me, but that, I'm just sharing what my experience was, that's all.
Ms. Reddick?
There's a handful of scout troops that, that used to enjoy coming down here and being able to attend both meetings, you know, be able to see both bodies in operation in a single outing. And, you know, they were disappointed, you know, they now pick one or the other, they can do both.
Ms. Rice?
No, I just want to clarify that, I just was willing to hear, to hear the reasons why you should switch back, that I haven't made a position yet.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, and then, and then I'll get Ms. McLeod's next.
I have no problem revisiting, but I just, you know, for the record, want to say that we're revisiting something that we just voted on five months ago because some of us have been given slack and flack for revisiting issues. I have no problem with it, but I'm just reminding you that we are, and that's fine to revisit issues. So let's remember that in the future, if something is revisited that you, that some people don't agree with.
Ms. McLeod?
Yeah, I have no skin in the game, obviously, but the, the, moving it around, to her point of only being five months, I think that you need to wait. There hasn't necessarily been an issue that has been that we're so want to speak. We have to go through the budget cycle again, and that typically is where we get a good chunk of people coming, so that may be worthwhile. And oddly enough, here in the last month or two, I've had, you know, a couple, a handful of people actually saying, "I'm glad you separated it." It was very odd and not solicited and not, and not, I didn't know these people, but just caught that I was on school board, I was finishing up those kind of things, and said, "I was really glad that, I know I have that option now." So, so you do, it's proactive versus reactive. Sure, it was a pain last week to have to come down just for an hour meeting with city council, but that's part of our responsibility. So, anyway, that's all my two cents.
All right, is there any other discussion about this? Item C has to do with committee assignments and adjustments, as we will be, we will be needing to do that, obviously. And so I pass those around to you. I will say that Mr. Edwards has asked to be moved on discipline to the Tuesday morning, he like, he's a morning person, and I appreciate that. So he has asked to move to that morning position to take Ms. McLeod's place. So, but if you have any desire, any interest in any of the other committees, please let Diane know, and she will keep that information so that when we do elect our leadership in January, then we can move on with the recommendation or the preferences that you have given her. And that had, I think that has to do with the standing rules. No, standing rules, the reason I passed the standing rules out to you had to do with the fact that if we change our meetings back, then our standing rules would have to change again, so, but that, that would, depending on what we decide to do, that, that will, we'll send that back to, I guess, the policy committee to make those changes if we so decide to change our meeting dates back.
What's the process for that? Like, what's the guideline?
Well, it would have to go back to the, to the policy committee and then come back for information and then vote the following. So probably wouldn't happen before February. And in February, I hope you all know, we probably will meet every single Tuesday because of the budget cycle, so. And in March, we have a special meeting, which we had to do because we have to do it according to when we send the budget over to city council. So our meeting in March has to be the first Tuesday, well, at least we have to meet at least for, to approve the budget for that first Tuesday in March. Okay? So that was the other conflict that had, that has gone on here, is that we have to have a special meeting in March.
So does the policy committee have what they need to make recommendations to this report for consideration?
They will not do that unless we vote to make a change. I know it sounds strange, because usually they come forward-
Are they going to vote on a resolution, asking the policy committee to make recommendations? Like, what is the process for this?
The policy committee's already got the draft, the draft of the bylaw adjustments, which would drive that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I'm going to throw this out here, this is, I, if we are moving, if you all are choosing to move a meeting back to the first and the third, so someone on the board can serve on a specific committee that meets on that night, there's always going to be conflict. I mean, I've had to just miss meetings, which I don't like to do when there's conflict, and so I hope we're not upturning a whole schedule of board meetings so that someone can serve on an outside committee that has nothing to do with the job that they were elected for.
Ms. Melnick?
Well, just remember, though, that we're going to meet on December 11th, and we're not going to meet again until January 8th, and it just seems like the 2nd and the 4th, there's month, there have been a couple of months that it's, it's been a bit skewed, and I, I think it's a long time to go without a meeting. From December 11th to January 8th, that's a long time.
If there's items, if it warrants an agenda, there's been plenty of times we've been here and we basically recognize people, given awards, and then we voted on minutes, and we've adjourned. I mean, there've been, we've really had some short meetings in the last, so that's something to consider, too, so.
Okay, Ms. Rice?
I, I just want to respond to that, that was not mentioned at all. So as far as people being on other committees, that had nothing to do with revisiting. So, that was not talked about at all. But I will say, I was going to say it before, now I won't say it, but I have heard from different people, and I don't know who they are, they're like, "Why'd you move it?" Okay, so I've heard the same type of things about, "Why'd you move it?", like you've heard, "Oh, I'm glad you moved it." So it's, it's, you know, can't please move six, one half a dozen of the other. So it's kind of like, "Let's look at it again, and let's look at the pros and the cons", which is what they gave us here to look at, so.
So the purpose of this tonight is to have a discussion about it, it's going to be presented for information. If you voted up or down, that's up to you at our next meeting, okay?
Dr. Spence? We're ready for the workshop on annual recruitment, staffing retention, and compensation.
Great. Well, this is going to be a two-part workshop, the first part on recruitment, staffing, and retention, and the second part on compensation, so it's going to be lengthy, and with that in mind, we're going to turn it right over to Mr. Mira.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman Anderson, Kate Farrell, you did it again. Mr. McDonald and Dr. Spence, board members, colleagues. This picture up here was selected for a particular reason, and if you think of that Beatles song, London Whining Road. Our, our work is a journey, it is, is not a destination. And we've been making some great progress, but there's always more to do. We're going to kick off with Anne Glenn Zelsnak, better known as AGZ, she's going to kick it off. And I guess at this point, we're going to ask you to hold your questions to the end, we have the slides numbered, so you can refer to the slide number. And with that, then she'll be followed by Judy Wood, our compensation specialist.
Good afternoon. Our agenda for today's presentation includes local, state, and national challenges facing our division in regards to recruitment and retention of teachers and our staffing results for the 2018, 2019 school year. In addition to this information, we will also review strategies that the Human Resources Department is implementing to recruit and retain teachers and other employees. We will complete our presentation with our annual compensation update. The Human Resource Department supports goal four of combat to 2020. We not only seek high-quality applicants, we also support our hiring managers, principals in their efforts to locate and identify staff that meet their schools and departments' needs. This in turn enables students to have a highly qualified teacher in the classroom. One local challenge we told you about last year was the high number of vacancies created after July 1st. This year, the number of vacancies created after July 1st decreased by 74 vacancies. Keep in mind, we hired 718 new teachers this year as compared to 618 last year. So we had more vacancies overall, but still were able to lower the number of late vacancies. This would have not been accomplished without support from you, our school board, school division services, budget, and council, and from all of our principals who met the challenge to staff positions early. Because we all worked together, we were able to hire new employees sooner. Now let's take a look at the market conditions across the Commonwealth and the nation. There continues to be a teacher shortage. Student enrollment in teacher preparation programs is low, this includes minority participation also. Therefore, the overall number of qualified applicants to fill our critical shortages in such areas as secondary math and technology education impact the division and the state. We continue to identify ways to increase our visibility in the educational market to attract qualified applicants to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The national enrollment in teacher preparation programs from 2008 to 2014, the latest year for which we have data, has declined by over 250,000 university students. Again, this decline is impacting the number of teachers available to fill teaching positions, especially those in the critical shortage areas. Now we see the previous graph with additional information about K-12 student enrollment nationally. The demand for teachers is going to continue to grow because of the rise of student enrollment. And as noted before, the supply of newly minted teachers is decreasing even while K-12 student enrollment is increasing. Please note that between 2011 and 2013, one more, 1 million more students enrolled in school. Now let's take a look at the state of enrollment in teacher preparation programs across the Commonwealth of Virginia. As you can see, the enrollment of students in teacher preparation programs in three different types of institutions remains low for minority participation. So the national projected outlook of the teacher shortage indicates that our supply of teachers is low in comparison to the number of K-12 students being enrolled. Here in Virginia Beach, we have worked diligently to address our needs and locate teachers to fill our vacancies. In this year's hires were 32 teachers who were awarded hourly commitment contracts to assist with staffing, math, and special education positions, along with eight VBCPS Future Teacher Award winners. Overall, all employees hired, including substitutes, classified employees, teachers, and all summer school staff total over 4,000 staff members. The percentage of our minority teacher hires continues to increase. The division's participation in a variety of career and education fairs has enabled us to provide for rich diversity. Minority recruitment continues to be a priority for the division. Here you can see the results of our minority teacher hiring over the past five years, which resulted in 22.7% minority teachers hires this season. We will share more about our strategies later in this presentation. Teachers from around the region continue to seek employment, with Virginia Beach City Public Schools also. Here you can see the results of minority recruitment in administrative positions over the past six years. So why do applicants choose Virginia Beach City Public Schools? When surveying all employees after onboarding about their choice to work with Virginia Beach City Public Schools, they have an opportunity to make more than one choice or one selection about why they chose to join our team. The number one reason continues to be living in Virginia Beach or close by. However, our reputation and connection to other members of the school community also impacts their decision. Most notably, the number of employees who are substitutes, former VBCPS students, and student teachers or school counselor interns. Our participation in a variety of career events in Virginia also increases our ability to provide information about our division and available positions for all employees. So what are some of the strategies we use to experience such success in our talent acquisition? Most efforts revolve around our outreach, particularly to candidates in teacher preparation programs, minority communities, career switchers, at our military community, and to our own VBCPS students. We will highlight a few strategies that are included in your comprehensive list. In the fall, we attended education fairs at historically colleges and universities, otherwise known as HBCUs. Military transition events, as well as navigating the journey at Virginia Beach Contention Center. During the winter months, recruited candidates at a national world language conference, along with meeting students at the University of Virginia, Old Dominion University, and East Carolina. We also continue to be active in our own division with our attendance at the African-American Male Summit and HBCUs. Growing our own teacher network starts each year with our biannual student teacher, school counselor intern reception, and participation at the Future Teacher Symposium hosted by Virginia Wesleyan. We continue to attend events at HBCUs, other Virginia schools locally and around the state. We also travel outside of Virginia to one of the largest education fairs in Pennsylvania, which is a regional consortium of 31 colleges and universities in the Pittsburgh area. We have two administrators from Pennsylvania who attend this fair and bring teachers from our schools who were recruited from this event in the past. They are able to make quick connections with university students attending the fair. And finally, we participated in our own virtual fair with California University of Pennsylvania. We head north to events in Ohio and in New York. We also had our own VBCPS Career Expo hosted by Lansdowne High School. And we will have that fair and event again this year, April 27th, mark your calendars. And finally, we have our early notification of resignation incentive program was also completed. This year, 200 teachers and/or administrators received the incentive, and interest was so great that we even had a waiting list. We thank the board and Dr. Spence for supporting this initiative. Again, it enables schools to begin identifying vacancies early for the upcoming school year. We capped off our spring recruitment season with contract signing for 40 Virginia Beach City Public School Future Teacher Award winners who attended along with their families. Along with our face-to-face contact with applicants, we are active in digital outreach, too. We expanded our reach across the internet through our own HR Facebook and Twitter pages to provide information to the community and applicants. In addition to these outlets, we also use job boards like LinkedIn, Education Week's top jobs, school jobs, to promote jobs in all positions. Along with radio and TV, we also had several campaigns that were started last year. In particular, the Be a Teacher and Be a Substitute print campaign included a brochure and pop-up stand that were placed at every school in the main office or school counselor's office. We recently had an applicant who applied to be a substitute bus driver because he saw the brochure at his granddaughter's school. You can see examples here in the room, which we kind of moved out of your way a little bit. But you will note that they were designed differently for different grade levels, so for different elementary, middle, and high school. We will continue to use our digital outreach to provide information about our division and encourage applicants to apply for positions within our division. This was a promotional video that was posted on our HR Facebook page in reference to our Career Expo that we had last year, and again, we'll have it this year on the 27th. Our newest initiative involves our participation in the Virginia Values Veterans, or V3 program. This program assists veterans who are exiting the military service to participate in paid internships who are exiting the military service, at no cost to the school divi- who are exiting the military service at no cost to the school division. Three of our human resource administrators have been trained and certified for the program. We are awaiting approval from the Department of Veteran Services and the Governor's Office. As you've heard, we have a national teacher shortage, and the overall unemployment rate nationally is hovering down near historic lows as it approaches the three percent mark. With over eighteen hundred retirees in the past five years, we need to maintain this valuable resource that has vast amounts of knowledge and about our school and the division. We have just launched the Retiree Opportunity Program, or ROP. This exciting new outreach program will enable retirees to stay connected to Virginia Beach City Public Schools through a webpage on vbschools.com. Retirees will be able to use this page to see employment and volunteer opportunities as well as access information about VAS and professional development. Now let's talk about retention. This chart represents employees who are eligible to retire with thirty years of service at the end of this school year. These are years of services that we have recorded in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, but does not include any other employment in conjunction with VRS. This means the actual number of employees with thirty years of VRS service is probably somewhat higher. Here are the top five employee groups in terms of likely retirements. Forty-two percent of our directors are eligible for retirement, along with forty-one percent of our executives, followed by professionals at twenty-six percent, maintenance at twenty-two percent, and principals at twenty-one percent. Teacher retention has been steady in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The retention rate at the second, eighth, tenth, and twenty-fourth years drops slightly above eighty-five percent. In the remaining years, the retention is above ninety percent, except in the thirtieth year of teaching. Teachers are staying and making a career here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. So what contributes to our retention success? We believe there are a number of factors which keep employees working with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Here are the reasons. Our teacher orientation and continuing learning institute, mentoring new teachers is critical to their success, along with our professional development programs, tuition reimbursement, school and instructional leadership opportunities, benefits, and finally compensation. This is a perfect segue for me to introduce our compensation specialist, Ms. Judy Wood, who will provide the compensation update.
Good evening, and thank you once again for allowing us to come before you to pre- to present information regarding our compensation programs. First, we will look at some of the accomplishments that we have made to our compensation programs, followed by an update on those programs. We, we will also take a look at the need to consider a clerical support job review. From there, we will move on to employee healthcare costs and finally some budget considerations. Let's start with some of our accomplishments. Over the past six years, the school board has approved funding to provide equity adjustments to employees on the unified pay scale. An equity adjustment represents the monetary difference needed to correct the pay disparity between employees on the same pay grade with the same years of experience. The two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year marks the final year for employees to receive this adjustment.
That's awesome.
Great accomplishment. As a reminder, in oh six, oh seven, the school division provided the same benefit to teachers when we combined two step pay scales into one at a cost of fourteen and a half million dollars, thus providing equal pay for teachers with the same years of experience. It wasn't until thirteen fourteen, as so, as funds became available, that we were able to begin addressing pay inequities for employees on the unified pay scale. At that time, we started the process with an estimated cost of eight and a half million dollars. However, it should be noted that we also were able to address moving the bus drivers, fleet staff, school psychologists, and school so- and social workers, and some other positions. So the approximate cost, cost was closer to ten million. Another result of this process was the ability to develop a unified experience-based step pay scale, something that employees have been asking for. A scale that would plot, that provides employees with more transparency regarding where they fall on the scale based on their credible years of experience. On this slide, we will provide you with an example used in pay grade five on the unified scale. Now on the left-hand side of the chart, we see a column representing credible years of experience, otherwise known as experienced steps. Please note, employees can access information regarding their personal credible years of experience and employee self-service. We added that as an enhancement to that module this year. At the bottom of the scale, at the bottom of the slide, you can see a list of jobs that fall on this pay grade. Therefore, if you are a bus assistant with ten years of experience, you can expect to earn eleven dollars and thirty-nine cents per hour. In addition, the scale provides the annual salary based on the employee's work calendar or how many hours they work per year. Another great accomplishment is how the division addressed salary compression. As a reminder, this type of compression exists when there is little to no pay difference between years of experience or steps. As of the eighteen nineteen school year, we began the process of addressing salary compression by providing slight, a slightly higher percentage increase to identify experienced steps on both of our scales, specifically steps five through eleven. For the eighteen nineteen school year, we were also able to increase the daily long-term substitute teacher rate from one twenty-four thirty-two to a hundred and fifty dollars. The last time we increased this rate was during the oh six, oh seven school year. And finally, due to budget constraints for the twelve thirteen school year, our tuition reimbursement program was decreased from one thousand dollars to six hundred and twenty-five dollars. We began to incrementally restore the tuition reimbursement rate starting in the sixteen seventeen school year to its current value of seven hundred and fifty dollars. So as you can see, we have made quite a few accomplishments with our compensation programs. Now let's turn our attention to providing you with an update on our compensation program, starting with our instructional experience-based step pay scale. Currently, there are five thousand two hundred teachers on this scale, and a teacher with zero years of experience can expect to earn forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And a teacher with thirty years of experience at the top of the scale can earn sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and three dollars. Now, as you know, we have teachers with more than thirty years of experience, so our highest earning teacher can make seventy-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So how do we compare locally for our teacher salaries? Each year, we participate in a survey which helps us to compare our salaries with surrounding school divisions. And we don't just compare at the zero-year benchmark. We look at rankings in increments of five all the way up to thirty years of experience. In looking at this chart, we also provide you with our rankings for seventeen eighteen for you to use as comparison to eighteen nineteen. So how do we stand? The school division maintained its first place ranking for teachers with zero and five years of experience. We also maintained our third place ranking for teachers with ten and twenty-five years of experience. And finally, we also maintain our second place ranking for teachers with thirty years of experience. However, the division dropped in the rankings from our number two spot to fourth and third place for fifteen and twenty years of experience. Another compensation program that adds value to a teacher's salary is our allowance program. And allowances are granted for having an advanced degree, license, or certification in a specific area, such as our National Board Certification for Teachers, our Registered Interpreter for the Deaf, and of course, our Master Journeyman License for our school plan employees. However, for the purpose of this presentation, we are going to compare our educational allowances for teachers, which are subject to VRS. So our educational allowance is not only adds value to an employee's yearly income, but it also impacts their retirement earnings. More and more schools of education are requiring their teacher candidates to enter into a master's program before being given a student teaching assignment. Therefore, questions about compensation for advanced degrees are always asked at job there, to which we respond, of course, we do. Out of the seven school divisions, VBCPS ties for number six for a master's degree, educational allowance for instructional employees, and we rank number seven for all of the other categories. So would anyone care to guess when was the last time we increased our educational allowances? Anybody?
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and four.
Okay, the last time we increased our educational allowance was over twenty-two years ago, in nineteen ninety-six.
I was thinking nineteen ninety-seven.
According to the National Center for Education Statistics, the average cost for earning a master's degree in a public institution in nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven was seven thousand two hundred dollars. Now that amount is over thirty thousand dollars. So what impact does the educational allowance for a master's degree have on our ranking with local school divisions? So I'm going to show this, you'll show you the slide that I showed before that shows our rankings in the market. Get in there. Now, once we take into consideration the pay offered for having a master's degree, looking at the equal signs at the top, we maintain our rankings for zero, twenty-five, and thirty years of experience. However, our rankings decrease in the market for five years where we move, we went from one to three, ten years, three to six, fifteen years, four to five, and twenty years, three to four. Fifty-two percent of our teachers hold a master's degree. However, when you factor in all types of advanced degrees that our teachers hold, the percentage increases to sixty percent. So sixty percent of our teachers are affected by our educational allowance program. Nationally, according to the U.S. Department of Education, fifty-seven percent of teachers have an advanced degree, and VBCPS, we have sixty percent. Moving on, this slide provides you with the current educational allowances for our two highest competitors in, um, in comparison to Virginia Beach. A proposed solution would be to increase our allowances to be competitive in the market as indicated by the targeted amounts. The funding to increase the allowances all at once would be approximately five point seven million dollars. However, as an option similar to how we addressed our equity adjustments, the allowances could be funded over three years, which would reduce the additional cost to one point nine million dollars each year inclusive of benefits. Moving on to our additional duty supplements. These supplements are paid to individuals in the schools who are some of the short roles, such as our department chairs, athletic cultures, coaches, coaches, or extracurricular activity sponsors. Now while this list is not all-inclusive, we wanted to provide you with a market comparison of where we stand in relation to additional duty supplements common in most school divisions. Please keep in mind that divisions, additional duty supplements have not been increased since two thousand and three, and that was for the vast majority of our athletic supplements. Over the years, the types of additional duty supplements and the needs to modify and change how we administer this program has changed, have changed. Therefore, we have formed an additional duty supplements oversight committee to review the program and provide recommendations for consideration of the superintendent's, superintendent's budget in December two thousand and nineteen. And you can see the members of, uh, committee, where they, what offices they come from, and we have principals, assistant principals, and we will form subcommittees as leader. Teacher assistants. These are the individuals who work side by side with the teacher to support them with providing instructions to our students. We currently place our teacher assistants on the unified pay scale on five different pay grades. Pay grade U six through U ten. We place them based on their highest educational attainment, as you can see here. When comparing our teacher assistants to surrounding school divisions, you can see that based on our lowest pay grade, U six, the hourly rate for a teacher assistant ranks at number five, while we rank first at, for our highest pay grade, pay grade ten. Please note that the majority of the, of the school divisions do not differentiate between teacher assistants based on their educational levels. Norfolk News and Virginia Beach are the only school divisions that provide a different pay rate. Moving on to our substitute teachers. These individuals help to ensure that our students receive instruction even when the teacher is not there. As you can imagine, remaining competitive in this area is also important. For the licensed teacher substitute, we pay the highest amount. In looking at the non-licensed substitute, we rank number two at eighty-nine dollars per day. However, the division offers an online training program that provides a rate of ninety-five dollars per day for substitutes completing the program. To date, approximately three hundred and thirty teacher substitutes have taken a role in this program. In addition, retired VBCPS substitute teachers who no longer hold an active teaching license are also eligible to receive this ninety-five dollar rate. Moving on to the long-term rate. As we mentioned earlier, we increased the amount to a hundred and fifty dollars after almost eleven years of no increases. However, other school divisions have the same idea and increased the rate, like Chesapeake, who went from one, one hundred and forty-eight dollars to one fifty-two this year. Now let's talk about a group of employees who helps, who help to ensure the efficient operation of our schools, departments, and offices each day, our clerical support staff. Approximately one thousand three hundred and ninety employees support our schools at each day. The jobs range from office associates over various levels to bookkeepers to data analysts, and as you can see, the list goes on and on and on. There are over forty-six different job titles in a clerical support role. And over the years, job requirements, technology, and internal processes have changed. Much like the bus drivers, teacher assistants, and fleet staff, we believe this group of employees merits consideration for review in the future. Given the complexity and scope of the work, we are exploring external options to assist with this process. Moving on to our employee health benefit costs. As a side note, we have, um, some of our Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow students on this slide, and these are the individuals who may become future VBCPS employees and also future consumers of our healthcare programs. In looking at our employee-only plan, you can see that Virginia Beach employees can expect to pay a hundred and twenty-seven dollars per month. And the annual, annual deductible is eight hundred and fifty. On our family-only plan, an employee can expect to pay seven hundred and ninety-six dollars a month, and the deductible is seventeen hundred dollars. A little step may be the beginning of a great journey. The quote reminds us of how you, the school board, have worked to fund the internal equity adjustments year by year, step by step. Please keep in mind that much like the equity adjustments, most of the items in the next slide can be phased in. Throughout the presentation, we have provided information related to some of our compensation programs. This chart provides a list of budget, of budget considerations if we were to enhance some of those programs in the future. Over sixty percent of our instructional employees are eligible for an educational allowance, and remaining competitive in this area is important. And we showed you earlier that it's about five point seven million dollars inclusive of benefits. As previously shown, if we were to reclassify our teacher assistants to a more competitive salary, pay grade ten, this would be the cost to move all of our teacher assistants to the minimum of grade ten. Anybody who was below the minimum would be brought up to the minimum. And there's also additional costs if we were to put, provide full equity for moving those teacher assistants. It would be an additional one point nine million dollars. Over the years, we've talked about moving certain positions on the teacher's pay scale to, um, excuse, on the unified scale to the teacher pay scale. And these are positions that are considered to be, um, teachers by the state, specifically school social workers, school improvement specialists, goddess department chairs, positions like that. And that would be the cost to move them back, to move them to the teacher pay scale. And then talking about the long-term teacher rate, family with other divisions increasing their long-term teacher rate, we would like to consider increasing the rate to a hundred and sixty-five dollars a day. And so, we can see it's ten million, ten point four million dollars. Also, as a reminder, our additional duty supplements program is under review, and that will incur an additional cost for consideration for inclusion in the superintendent's budget in December two thousand nineteen. Obviously, we don't have a value here as we are still working through that. That pretty much concludes my part of, my part of the presentation.
Questions?
Ms. McLeod? The, I just want to confirm, so the, the additional ten and a half million I rounded up, that it would cost for those increases, that would be an annual. This isn't just a one-time thing, this is every year adding ten and a half million dollars in order to accomplish that, correct?
That's correct.
Adding-
Yeah.
Did you say adding ten and a half million every year?
Yes. It's a recurring cost.
It's a recurring cost, yes, yes, yes.
So, I just want to make sure everybody understood it wasn't just a one-time expenditure, it was definitely recurring. Regarding, and Dr. Spence, I think I have, are more and more colleges and universities that they, like, I know ODU does this. So, they get their, their foundation in a subject, and then they have to get their masters. Almost all of our teachers are now coming out with masters, just by the way the universities are setting that up, is that correct?
It's, yes, there's a, there's a required additional certification beyond your bachelor's degree. So, almost all, not almost all, all teachers in Virginia now that get certified take an additional year. Not all of them get a master's degree, most of the universities are offering a five-year master's program where you get both in five years, but not all, and so some still would come out without.
And last year during the legislative session, we looked into that. We were asking them to go and because of the teacher shortage, to come up with some assistance to try to get our teacher or educators through the process faster.
And actually, that did happen.
Right.
So, there's been some language directing the higher education community to revisit and reconsider developing a four-year education major.
Has there been, do we know progress?
They're working on it, I don't have much of a progress update. We have folks who are at the table with ODU right now, working on that, so.
Good. The other questions I have, do you by chance know, for our, the majority of our substitutes, do they live in Virginia Beach? We don't have that number, we have to just run a report to see. Sure, yeah. Our database. And then they, so, okay, because I, I was kind of curious about that, because I, I kind of assume that when I'm looking at what others pay. The reason why is, is it's likely that, you know, they're going to want to, because they live in Virginia Beach versus to drive to Portsmouth because they pay five dollars or ten dollars more a day, kind of a thing. The question also is, on every, as a day, daily process, what do you know, approximate number of the shortage we have each day of not having enough substitutes to fill the positions?
We can run a daily report, I could pull a report in minutes, but there is a daily report that we can run through our frontline. We use ASOP, which is our substitute management system, or applicant management system.
But just as a quick guess, do you have any idea?
That varies from day to day because it also deals with what day of the week.
Yes, sure, I get that, yeah.
So, I would, I, I would hate to even give a good gander, because I need to see what those numbers look like.
Hundreds, tens?
Do you have, Anne, do you have an idea of the fill rate, percent, generally?
Easily would be anywhere between eighty, I would easily say eighty percent and eighty-five percent.
So, keep in mind when you hear that, don't assume fifteen percent aren't showing up. It, it's a bit of a complicated question because the schools may have the, the class covered, the teacher may not require a substitute for the part of the day. But I actually talked to Dr. Robertson just today about looking into doing some analysis of the substitute situation. And so, we're going to actually be studying, exactly, we want some data on it, so, because we're hearing a lot of chatter about difficulty, our subs not showing up, et cetera.
Sure.
But without having that data, I, we, we like to operate with good solid data.
And then, so my, my question would also be the same, is for the long-term subs, how many positions do we, are we short, that, as far as that goes? So, is that easier to fill long-term?
It is, it is easier to fill long-term substitutes because we're pulling from, number one, where you're pulling from the applicant pool. So, the, the principals are actually being able to go and look in applicant pool. I've also developed a, a small folder that we're using, like utilizing from our substitute training, our substitute onboarding. So, I will identify who's certified, I go back and review that information, and I kind of created a folder so the principals can go look there directly. But a lot of times that they have regulars that are at their schools.
Right.
They are pulling from, now they're pulling from the community, I can speak for myself as an assistant principal for a lot of years. It was really great, we pulled in people from the community, and we just made that, you had to make those connections. And that's how you found other people, like they say, oh, I know somebody who knows somebody else. So, there's a lot of networking that happens with that.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald?
In the, in the years, in really sort of mid-years, we're not as competitive regionally with salary. I know there was a graph that showed retention by years of experience, but have y'all cross-referenced to determine if in those years we're not as competitive, if we are losing people to other cities in the region because we're not as competitive in salary? Or just that they're going in those years?
The, the reasons that we heard as far as staff from this year that I have, and from last year was because of, they live close, so they lived in Chesapeake, and they were traveling. A couple of people just literally moved out of state because of us being a military town. So, those are the reasons that we had for staff leaving.
Try-
Anne, do you know the number offhand of how many left to go to surrounding division this year?
You gave that to us one time.
It was sixteen last year, I think, yeah.
Yeah, at some point we gave us that.
We did give the number of how many actually are coming this way.
Yeah, just trying to get a sense of, you know, they're like, oh, I'm at ten years, and I can get three thousand more dollars in Chesapeake, it's time to make the jump, you know?
We have had, we did have some teachers this year that we actually did, they had accepted offers, and they came, and then they changed their mind when they saw the health insurance, and they took those.
Health insurance is a biggie.
That's a major differentiator there. Second question, do we know the breakdown of education for our teacher assistants? So, for example, we know that there's a teacher shortage, but there's a whole plethora of reasons for that. As far, and so we have a, a, a pay broken down by education for our teacher assistants. So, are we having trouble getting teacher assistants, and when we do get them, do we end up with more educated teacher assistants? Because that's what we do compared to other cities in the region?
I have not looked at the education in terms of saying that this person is doing, knowing the breakdown of how it looks, but we can't get you that information.
We could, we could run those numbers, it'll be easy enough for us to identify how many teacher assistants we have on each tier.
That would be great, it'd be helpful to see if our structure is actually affording us more highly qualified teacher assistants. Thank you. And then a third question, it was included in your presentation but not on your list of unmet needs, restoring the tuition reimbursement to a thousand dollars. I'd like to see what that number is. Thank you.
Mrs. Manning?
Excellent presentation, thank you. Last year, we addressed bus driver pay. Have you looked at any numbers, how competitive we are with other divisions right now since we've done that?
With the bus drivers, it's almost like we go back and forth with certain school divisions, they're still competitive, but I have not looked at them recently, but I kind of looked at them, though it didn't increase their salary.
Yeah, if, if we could look at that, just, and I, I know that we always struggle with getting bus driver social and making sure that we're competitive there.
We're also brainstorming some additional retention concepts there, too. Bus drivers, the market, the market primarily, somebody was asking earlier, is in the vicinity of where they live primarily? You, you know, because the salaries, even if we bump it up a little higher, we're not going to get somebody coming all the way, yeah.
Good point, okay.
Ms. Williams?
Okay, thank you, everybody, that was a great report, y'all do such a thorough job. With the teacher assistants, so if you're on the, if you have the minimum education and you're a teacher assistant, you're making how much a year? Give me a yearly.
On U-six, so if you are a teacher assistant, with a general, starting out, can I give you this, the beginning?
Yeah.
Okay, as a beginning teacher assistant, you would be making about fifteen thousand.
Okay, and what if you're at the U-ten, is U-ten, is it ten times?
U-ten is for special education, because remember, we have five different pay grades. So, U-ten for our special education, it would start out at twenty-four, oh, I'm sorry, it would start out at twenty, twenty thousand. On U-ten.
So, starting at fifteen and then twenty, so what's the most you can make as a teacher assistant?
For U-ten?
Yes.
Right now, for thirty years, it's thirty-two thousand.
Okay, and then they are covered by our insurance, can, if they want to, okay. Now, okay, the substitutes, a long-term substitute, can they take our insurance? No, because-
The site-assigned substitutes are eligible.
Okay, and what are the site-assigned substitutes called? I ask this every year, and I'm sorry, I apologize, because I can't remember the name.
You'll hear people say permanent substitute and site-assigned substitute, so they use, we use the state term, permanent. So, they are assigned at that school, they have a TEA, temporary employment agreement, so they only go to that school, and they work there. They are eligible for ACA benefits, because we automatically know that they're going to be working a certain number of hours every week, so they're automatically eligible. And then, the benefits office does a great job at that look-back piece, so we still give out the part-time ACA information to everyone. Because they, if they work a certain number of hours and they're doing the look-back, which is their calculation that they do, that's what I mean. But that's their calculation, then they also could potentially be eligible, so they're provided that information. Actually, this year, we posted that on, as a little message on our absence, or subset, absent management system so that people were aware of it in that window of time that came open, so we work with them, just to kind of keep that information.
So, the substitutes get ninety-five a day, the long-term, a hundred and fifty a day, and what's the permanent?
It's eighty-nine dollars a day for substitutes, their daily rate, if they are not licensed, which means they have to have sixty credits or more.
Right.
And then ninety-nine dollars a day if they're licensed. If they take the study training, they'll take the study training, they score eighty-five percent or better, it's an online course, about eight to ten hours, they earn ninety-five, their rate goes up to ninety-five daily. And in Virginia Beach City Public School Teachers that are retired, who let their license expire, because we know their license here with us, and they work with us, can go up to ninety-five, that's when we notify, because we don't, because of their status of being retired, we don't always know when they're coming back until they come back, and then we, we have done.
Okay, and that's a substitute, what, what about that permanent substitute?
Permanent substitute is ninety-one fifty.
Oh, this, okay, the ninety-one fifty, the long-term, then it's different, too, okay.
So, it's ninety-one fifty for the permanent substitute, non-licensed, it's a different rate than ninety-five with steady, and then ninety-nine if they're licensed.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McLeod?
Thank you, I forgot a question, I don't think I understood something correctly. So, it appears that, like you just, you mentioned that we had forty students from a senior's go through the teacher, future teacher program. But did I understand that we only hired eight of them, I mean, or actually contracted, so does that mean they just changed their mind, well, we're putting forty through, only eight are doing it?
Some go for the masters, some change their minds, some move away, so we only, we, well, not only, but we got eight from that, so. That's why we felt more comfortable upping the number, because historically, the percent is not-
So, about twenty-five percent, we can basically kind of say, ish.
Actually not, because we just recently increased that to forty, it didn't used to be forty, it used to be two per school, so it was usually, it was around twenty-four. So, if you go back four or five years from when these particular students started school, it's a slightly better percentage.
Gotcha. And then what is our, because we brought up insurance, what is the average cost per employee for just for their, our cost for their? How much are we spending, what is our cost for their, providing insurance? What's their package?
Do you have any idea?
What's the value of their package?
For health insurance.
For health insurance.
We could get it for you, I mean, I'd rather not, say, I'd rather give you a specific.
Okay, great, I'm just kind of curious.
It's over five thousand dollars.
Oh, easily, yeah, easily.
Yeah, and if it's family, closer to ten or twelve.
Yeah. And then, the only comment I have is, I don't understand when we're willing to pay long-term subs a hundred and sixty-five days, a dollars a day, and I know we're, they may go part of the year without a job, I don't know why we're even paying our permanent subs less per day when we know we have them than a daily sub. And I know it's because they could go without a job, and they'd rather know they have a job every day.
There's, there's another factor there, that the permanent subs or the site-assigned subs, the terms keep changing. They are, yes, they're guaranteed work every day, and they're not always used as classroom teachers. So, we don't drop their pay down when they're doing teacher assistant work, they still get substitute teacher pay. So, that's another factor considered.
I just, Anne.
Well, and just to keep in mind, if they are utilized for some reason in a capacity for a long-term- Because sometimes it happens, we're at the end of the year, and we're like, okay, we know this teacher, and we're May, then we can, we are in a position because they are in a TEA, we have put them in that long-term substitute position, they've received the higher rate if they're licensed, so we can do some creative work with that because they're in that position.
I'm glad to know that.
I, I also want to add another, I add this one every year as a reminder. Remember that the long-term subs are going to the PTA meetings, they're grading papers, they're holding parent conferences, lessons, they're doing everything.
I did that.
And they have to be licensed, too, so.
Exactly.
Permanent subs do not have to be licensed.
Right.
That's what I was going to say.
But it looked like many of them are, yeah, yes, yeah.
Mrs. Ryan?
For subs in general.
So, I, I just want to say, I mean, for, given that the reality, nationally, this, this, this drop in teacher supplies, you know, we see it each year, but it's still, it's as startling every year that we see it, that I, that I just applaud this division for all the initiatives that right now we've, you know, managed to kind of stay even. And I think it's particularly notable, the minority hiring, and I remembered that fourteen percent, because it's when I was elected. And to be up to twenty-two point seven now, I just think that deserves a lot of recognition. And I wanted to say about the master's requirement, I did confirm when I was at my alma mater earlier this fall that the four-year option is still available, and it is at William &amp; Mary. But, you know, I think it's been set here too before, another thing for, that I'm sure the General Assembly is considering is that these students or families assume extra debt. And so, you're asking for an extra year of debt for a profession that doesn't pay what a lot of business or technology and jobs pay. So, hopefully, you know, heads will come up with a good solution there, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, we appreciate, it was a great report. I think we, we have, Ms. Lanetti, do we, do you think we have time to go into close?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, all right, so, if you'll read us into close, Mr. McDonald?
Chair, I move to recess and close session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two dot two thirty-seven eleven A, Part A, Paragraphs two and seven, Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for, A, Student Disciplinary Matters, Discussion or Consideration of Admission or Disciplinary Matters, and any other matters that would involve disclosure of information contained in this classic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or the state school system. However, any student legal counsel, student, legal counsel, if the student is a minor, student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence in closed meeting. If a student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board pursuant to Section two dot two thirty-seven eleven A two, namely to discuss student complaints and related litigation from BDEO systematic complaint. Be legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture for the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened on or which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party pursuant to Section two dot two thirty-seven eleven A seven, namely to discuss consultation of legal counsel regarding pending litigation.
Second, Mrs. Melnick has seconded, all those in favor, please raise your hand, all those opposed, raise your hand, okay, we are.